And does that start?
Okay.
Well, the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Sorry for the delay, a little internet problem. I'll take the role, Mr. Casey is here, Ms. Cogan. Ms. Gigglyell is excused. Ms. Gizzy?
Here.
Mr. Keen?
Here.
Mr. Keel?
Here.
Mr. Larrabee?
Here.
Mr. Mezek?
Here.
And Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of the minutes, I'll entertain a motion. So move Mr. Keen and Mr. Ryan. Any comments, questions, concerns? On a motion by Mr. Keen and second by Mr. Ryan, have we approved the minutes of the February 8th? And the special meeting of February 14th be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Superintendent update, Dr. Perry?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. Just some updates, obviously, we have got some updates from the Governor's Office that the mask mandate will end effective tomorrow, it starts school, so masks will no longer be required but optional in South Colony Schools and on school buses and school grounds starting with tomorrow. Masks will be available for any child or staff member or visitor who would like one. And those that choose to continue to wear ones will certainly be allowed to do so. And we'll make sure that there's no concerns. We'd ask that we respect everybody's individual right to choose what's best for them and their child. And as far as masking goes, so that tomorrow will take effect. We have other mitigation strategies that are still in place. We'll be messaging information out tomorrow afternoon. We have some updates from the New York State Department of Health related to some of the requirements for unvaccinated staff members. Right now, they're still required to test on a weekly basis. So we anticipate that information, it may not affect our parents or students, but it impacts our unvaccinated staff, so I'll message that out. Things related to submission of our data on the portal, or still some of the requirements that are out there. As far as our in-school mitigation strategies, how do we still keep students and staff safe? We are going to continue those layer mitigation strategies. That is everything from hand washing to what they call respiratory etiquette, your sneeze, sneezing in your elbow, so you're not, you know, sneezing across the table at someone. As well as our ventilation strategies, we've got 25% air capacity comes in as part of our heating and ventilation system, so that will continue at maximum capacity. And a variety of things that are still in place. Social distancing of three feet has been the norm. We'll continue to do that to the greatest extent possible. It doesn't mean that in all situations, people will always be three feet away, but it's the recommended. We'll do that to the best of our ability. At-home test kits are still available. It's, you know, been less and less of a demand, but they're still available either through the district office, our bug testing site, or at individual school buildings. So if anybody needs one, we still have those available. And just a quick update on the unfortunate situation in Sand Creek. Just prior to the break, obviously, we had a teacher on administrative leave. This is both an active criminal investigation as well as a disciplinary investigation as far as teacher certification process. We have replaced the individual and we'll be moving forward for separation from the district. But I just want to thank our South Colony community, our Sand Creek community, parents, faculty, staff, and students. The outpouring of support for those victims has been tremendous. It's greatly appreciated, very much welcomed. They needed that pick-me-up, they needed that support. This is a heinous, heinous act and one that was devastating to those individuals involved and certainly to our students. So we thank you, a lot of care packages, a lot of food, a lot of cards and things like that of support. So we appreciate that and I know the Sand Creek staff appreciate it as well. Last thing, as we continue to work on capital improvement projects, Colony 2025 is a new referendum that we are going to bring to the voters in October of '22, so this fall. We're starting to fine-tune some of those details. These projects will include a proposed library, a new library at Viter Elementary School, classroom renovations throughout the district, improvements to our athletic facilities, locker rooms, bathrooms throughout the district, as well as a new transportation facility and upgrades to the district office and O and M. We're still working whether or not that will be at one of two sites. So we're working through those site plans and we'll work with our Transportation and Facilities Committee on Thursday and then bring those things back to the full board. Our architects and engineers have vetted out many of the cost factors and the scopes of these projects. And we're working with our fiscal advisors and our business office to identify the potential costs. But we're excited about the potential of this project. We have a lot of needs in our buildings, so they're well-maintained, but they're old. And, you know, our kids deserve quality facilities and quality programs. So just want to put that out there, there'll be more information shared as we get a little bit closer to April. And then as we get closer towards, just after the budget, we'll continue to message out information towards that capital project and what that will look like. So again, just want to try to share that out with folks. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. New business, I just have one item. I'd like to extend my thanks and congratulations to all the winter teams that made it as far as they did. I know we had some wrestlers make it to the sectionals. Now they're moving on, basketball teams, both the girls, I think they have a game.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Which will put them in the.
In the semifinals now.
Excellent.
Playing Shen at September 12th, I think.
All right, very good. So that's, I'd like to shout out to those folks and those teams and the coaches.
Can I piggyback on that? We've got some suburban council champions. Our girls cheer team was suburban council champion. And the boys bowling team was also suburban council champion with six students, six boys making the ball suburban team.
Lot of good things happening.
And then we've got some track stars that have qualified for Nationals.
Excellent.
Relay team, shot putters, we're still, still well in the.
Doing something, doing something right. So again, congratulations to those folks. And the other new business. All right, old business. This is going to be a nice meeting. Public comments, communications. We have some folks that would like to address the board, Stacy Jewbert, Ms. Jewbert?
I.
Please.
I'm sure everyone thinks that because the mask mandate is lifted as of tomorrow, that's the same. For our kids who have lost so much over the course of the last two years, this is far from the end. It's been a huge disappointment to watch this district over the course of the last two years not stick up for our kids. You didn't advocate for them, you didn't make adjustments to school day to make any of this easier for them. In fact, recently, hall monitors at Leishakil have had clipboards writing down students' names who walked by them with masks under their nose, threatening to send them to the principal's office. These COVID guidelines has destroyed our kids the last two years. You didn't do much of anything to stop it. In fact, the 10th graders are now, as I told, they have an extra block of math. They have to take next year because they are so far behind. Why didn't you all address this before now? Why did you wait so long? You didn't notice any of this happening last year because we all did. On February 11th, the school district posted on their Facebook page a photo of seven guidance counselors, maskless, all sitting next to one another, no social distancing, all sitting and smiling. Our kids don't get to do that, they didn't get to do that. Looking at that photo was a slap in the face to parents who send their kids to school masks, knowing they don't get mask breaks for photo ops. I'd like to know who took that photo, who posted it, who thought it was a good idea to post it? Some of you even liked that photo. This is not about supporting or not supporting our teachers, but they're adults being paid to do a job. We have kids that we are sending to school to learn. There is a really big difference. I'd like to know, as a district, what are you doing to ensure that this never happens to our kids?
Thank you. Ms. Tina Bruno, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So this is also about masks. Some concerns about the effects that mandate has on our children. I understand it's no longer mandated starting tomorrow, which is great for now, but I want to discuss the future. We appreciate that our district joined in with several of our superintendents and a letter advocating for the end of mask mandates for our children on Saturday. And then on Sunday, Governor Hope will announce that masks will be optional for schools, Wednesday. But for the last two years, masks have had a harmful effect on the development of our students. Mask wearing for six to eight hours a day has caused many to have reported experiencing headaches, fatigue, and anxiety. A study from May 2020, which included healthcare workers who wore masks several hours a day, found that most of the participants developed PPE-associated headaches or experienced the exacerbation of a pre-existing headache disorder. And I referenced as I can show the whole, you know. Of those studies. Other studies have examined the effects that masks have had on speech and communication, which is very close to my heart. Communication is essential in K-12 classrooms. Children must understand what is being spoken to them in the classroom in order to learn. Children must understand this, especially for younger elementary grades. Majority of communication is speech. When the auditory piece of speech is distorted and muffled by background noises or covering over the mouth, like I'm finding it very difficult to hear some people, I really am, and I can't be an argument itself. It just sounds muffled. The listener must rely on other clues in order to understand the message being spoken. That is when students look to read lips as well as body language. Very young children, especially students with speech disorders like autism or ESL students, rely heavily on visually watching mouth movements, facial expressions, and learning speech in general, just from speech therapists. And understanding of being said to them when learning any topic, concept in class. Imagine doing that for almost two years. Well, we were doing remote for part of the first part and then, yeah, two years. Masks pose two serious problems for children who are trying to learn, communicate with their teachers, both visual and sound. Masks create the visual barrier for kids who rely on the nonverbal communication signals on the face, like mouth movements, lips, teeth, and tongue, as well as general facial expressions. In addition, masks distort the sound of the teacher's voice. One German study, which included normal, it's a very recent study, actually. One German study, which included normal hearing, made of German participants investigating the effects of speech while wearing masks. On the audiovisual version of the German matrix test, a test that is on video of a person speaking, so the test participant has both audio and visual cues in the video. They added a simulated mask on top of the speaker's mouth into the video as well as created the sound difference caused by the mask. This article cited another study by Musey et al. that found a more than 20% decline in speech recognition when wearing a mask, which was in line with this German study that found about 20% speech intelligibility loss. 87% of participants in this study performed worse in the test with both visual covering and audio sound reduction caused by the mask on the speaker's face. This article also cited Coria et al., which discussed the use of transparent masks that found that while the speech intelligibility improved with visual cues, the acute acoustic properties were worse than a regular mask. In conclusion, this study said, I quote, "The speaker's use of masks leads to a significant deterioration of speech understanding by the normal hearing listener," and, end quote, "and," quote, "audiovisual speech perception is highly affected by the face mask wearing," end quote. Governor Hope lifted the mask mandate for adults a few weeks ago while still mandating masks for schools, which was discriminating against our children who are most harmed by the use of masks. While their young minds are struggling to understand the content communicated to them in the classroom for those last two years, with a very high survival rate for HPCDC and children least affected by the virus, it does not make sense to require a mask mandate for our children. And thank you for joining with other school districts this past weekend in advocating for the removal of mask mandates on our schools. But we want to encourage you, please stand with us to never allow the mandate to happen again in the future. And let remain the sole choice of parents to make such decisions for their own children, whether it's mask or not mask in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Perry, any questions?
There's nothing online here.
All right, very good, thank you. Item eight, Board Committee Reports and Action. Policy Committee, Ms. Cogan, I believe.
Yep.
You are the chair, please.
Policy 1000, Community Relations and Goals, this is our final reading and approval. On behalf of the Policy Committee, upon the motion made by the committee chair, Stephanie Foden, recommendation that the revisions made to the above stated policy 1000 be approved as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Mr. Keel, Committee Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Well, I hope everybody did look at the report and I would just like to commend Mr. Marone and Mrs. Wells and Mr. Barret for all they have done for the, for all of our students. This academic achievement report was basically about the students who are not in our regular classrooms at all times and just, I wish you'd have been, all had heard the presentation of all that is being done for all of those students. And also, Mr. Barret and Mrs. Wells reported about the distance learning that some of our students were taking advantage of, as well as many surrounding students, surrounding district students are taking advantage of it. Mr. Barret and Mrs. Wells were pretty much in charge of the whole capital area in that regard, so we commend them for that as well. I sure hope you realize the value that these people have in doing what they do for our students. Are there any questions about any particular, I can't, I can't tell you all those acronyms that that were on the list, but we have plenty of programs that work for our students.
We feel the plan would be, maybe not if we go through budget season and everything else, but Mr. Marone gives a year under, many alternative programs, we'll have him come address the entire board. The basic outline would be academic achievement, but it'll give him time to get a little more settled. Not that he didn't hit the ground running.
Exactly, I don't want you to give the impression that he's not right on top of things. He certainly is. You've done a very wonderful job, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Reports for Information Study, Budget Development. Mrs. McAllister. Favorite part of the evening? I think so.
Today, I have, we're going to focus on special education CPS from our team here. I'll go through these slides and then hand it over to them just to talk about the programs that are working on and developing as we go through for budget development.
So, Jefflyn, as you're getting that set up, just for folks that may have not been here on the last meeting, we have our budget broken into different parts. On the eighth, we presented our operations and maintenance and transportation facilities budget. Tonight, we're presenting our people services budget. On March 8th, we'll present our instructional budget, leading to our first draft on the, I think it's the 15th of March, and then from there, we progress to the adoption in April, so, thank you.
We'll recap our budget priorities with our South Colony four pillars at the cornerstone of our budget development. We want to focus on academic equity opportunities for students, increase access to services for students, structural sustainability of programming is a priority, and Dr. Perry mentioned earlier, our next generation Colony 2025 project that we're working toward. It's something to keep in mind as we go through the budget. So our budget factors, these have been fine-tuned as we go through our presentations up through, you know, our first draft, second draft, as we get through. We have our state aid, federal aid, and tax cap, our revenue factors. Tax cap this year is at 2%, and we are, while inflation is at 4.7%. We do have additional foundation aid coming to the district that would go into us from the GEA back in 2011, so we're working on towards that. Our tax cap factors are, these are the things that go into our tax cap, and today was the deadline to submit the tax cap, that was submitted. And our tax cap this year is 2.9392%. And that, those factors from the previous slide go into our pack where we, our public exclusion are a level growth factor and our internal district growth. We are looking right now at, as we go through the budget development process with the board, possibly going out for 1.99% tax levy increase with our tax cap that was submitted today at 2.9392%. And that is something that we will discuss as we move through the budget development process. Financial trends on the expense side, as I said, inflation is, the CDIU is used in the tax cap formula. That's the urban index, this is the regular index, it's 7%. So we're seeing increases in supplies, services, all over the, all across the board. Health insurance, we are a member of TaxCheck, which does a great job, it's the voluntary school health insurance consortium, and they do a great job of, they get you cool resources with other schools in the area, and that helps us get our, our health insurance rates a little lower than the market. So we're looking at a 2% major medical, 3% Medicare, and 10% RF. So that's just where we're at with those. Salary trend, contractual trends, our 2%. And then our pension contribution, so the slide increases for CRS this year. And now we'll focus on our special ed programs. I'll turn it over, we have Musliman, Tim Fowler, and Bill Wardman, and I'll let them introduce themselves with their titles, if they can take it from here, a bunch of all my goals.
Good evening, members of the board and the community. So I'm Tim Fowler, I'm the supervisor of Special Education and People's Services for the district. It seems like it wasn't not too long ago that we had a full board report related to the people services and specialization, so we're going to highlight just some of those things as a visual reminder for the board as well as the community, and then speak specifically on what we're seeing as current trends and patterns as it relates to what we project for ramping to next year. These tenants, the special education department goals, these are eight guidance tenants that we developed as part of our specialization instructional council a few years ago. They continue to be some of the hallmarks of how it guides our work moving forward. Certainly are, there's been certain efforts of working as teams as well as at the department level and my own building and district administration, in terms of just building coordination, consistency in our program and services throughout our system, K-12. Again, there's a plethora of departments that fall under the umbrella of people services and special education, and so we found that sometimes folks were working in isolation, so we created opportunities for department meetings and extra department communication teams. That certainly clear messaging is important, particularly when you are considering students moving from one level to the next. For instance, for our students that have transitioned from fourth to fifth, critical and pivotal year, a lot of communication is needed in terms of making sure those students are hitting the ground running and move up to the next level, and that program might be the best space for any of the students that have a disability or has other needs. In terms of curriculum building, we have also done quite a bit of work around social emotional learning supports. We have moved forward with our second step curriculum, which acts as a social emotional platform to teach positive behaviors as well as ways of mental health awareness for our students. We've done that grades K-5, I think we're looking at moving that up to the next level and then moving to K-6. So that's been positive, we've gotten a lot of feedback from our staff and we're seeing reports of that. Also, as it relates to alignments, that's, the GANET Fed, that was more when we were first starting worker phasing in our co-teach programs. And I think that partnership between our general education and our special education certainly has been solidified. All the work that has gone forward is in terms of professional development, certainly made that work after, I'm seeing those, I think the bridges have been built. We have great access to both, to an age of students with disability. A lot of professional development has taken place since the inception of our co-teach programs, and it's also ongoing. As of late, certainly a lot of focus is also then around trauma and foreign practices as well as social emotional learning at large. Data-based instruction, decision-making, basically, how do we make recommendations to what is the appropriate level of service for a student? When do we make decisions, I want a student that might need more support equally? How do we make a decision, I want a student that might need less support? And then we have not moved forward with our educational rounds. That's been on pause, that's pandemic-related, but that was also positive traction. That was when we had our CSE chairs and our school psychologists had an opportunity to go around the district, look at various programs from building to building, level to level. The staff found that very eye-opening. It's one thing to see on paper what programs and services are, but seeing that, as I say, pictures worth a thousand words. Our teachers did not have that opportunity to do that because we came in and the teachers also thought it would be beneficial to kind of see if I'm a self-enthoughtained teacher at elementary, what that looks like at the next level, just to kind of have a prepared grasp and also consistency. Without that one. Highlights at large, there's a lot to celebrate, very busy department. One of the things I just talked about again, a huge success around the social emotional learning piece. Our mental health team, composed of our school social workers, our school psychologists. Our district team also not only had district staff, it also has several community partners at the county level, state level as well, and they have provided tremendous support to that work. That work has been ongoing, we meet monthly, and it's been a win-win relationship. Certainly our CCC, the Colony Community Connection Program, that was, it is a huge success that Urban Planning Ceremony just highlighted to the public at large, so we're grateful what's happening with our partnership with some of the businesses, with the at-home center, with our class and our students executing experience with actual hands-on work-based learning. P's Lab is complimentary to that, that's onsite at the high school. But that, again, it's by way of reminder, that was an opportunity for our students with hands-on experience. At one point in time, we have our students out, we contracted for that service. They had opportunities to go to different agencies to get hands-on experience. Pandemic kind of disrupted that, we looked at strengthening interim capacity, P's Lab also sets that work. Our co-teach continuum, when we first started this work a few years ago, we started with K-4. And at the middle level, we began with grade five, and at the high school, grade nine. Each year, each subsequent year, we added another grade level. This year, we rounded out the implementation of grade eight, so now we have a full continuum of co-teach services, grades K-9, it's a huge success, a lot of work has gone forward to make that happen and to continue to make that successful program. One of the things that we're seeing as a trend, and you'll see that in some of the slides, is that our co-teach population is growing while our self-enthoughtained population in some, some aspects are getting strengthened on the academic side. Then departmental leadership, long-term planning, we spend a great deal of effort working not only with each other, but billing administration, and then all of our departmental staff really dialing in to what we see as current needs of students, but also the projected needs of students as special ed is a moving target, but trying to get ahead of that as much as you can really has positioned us to sustain all the increase that we've seen with disabilities in our district. Melissa's going to step in.
I'm Melissa Willman, I'm our elementary special ed supervisor. I'm also our elementary CSC chairperson and CPSC chairperson. I'm going to be reviewing some of the data that we have for our special education population. This slide here actually shows our five-year trend. I'm not going to review all of the data for you, but I'm going to point out some of the highlights that we found as we were reviewing this data. The column all the way to the left is our current-to-date projections of how many students we have at our various locations. I want to first share with you that this year since July, July 1st, we've actually had 48 new students. Um I wanna first share with you that this year since July, um July first, we've actually had forty-eight new students uh enroll in our district that came with an I E P already, so they were already receiving special education services. That is um a very significant number, um it's, I think, kind of precedent setting for us. Um so I'm gonna go from the top and kind of work our way down with some of the highlights. One of the first things that we noticed actually was our Sand Creek Middle School numbers. You'll notice over the five-year trend that we've increased by almost forty students at that location. But more importantly, if you look from last year to this year, there's a pretty big jump of twenty-two students. Um part of that is new students that have enrolled in the district. Another one would be our Saddlewood Elementary School, that also we see that positive trend of students um enrolling in our Saddlewood Elementary School. So in that five-year trend, there's been um about eleven student increase, um but it's it's continuing to grow. The other place that we really see the increase, especially this year, has been in our students that are either in a Bosse's placement or placed in private schools and agencies. A large number of the students that we have uh that have enrolled in the district this year were actually already placed in special education services in those settings. So those were not students that we had placed in those settings and we weren't anticipating them um uh when we were making our planning and projections. I'd also like to talk a little bit about, and it's way at the bottom of your screen, our C P S E numbers. So as I mentioned, that number is to date. So as of yeah March first, we have approximately seventy-seven students that receive, that are um receiving C P S E services. C P S E is a little bit different than our school age services because those services start from the day the child turns three until they enter kindergarten, which means that that number actually moves pretty quickly because students are being referred all of the time. But as we look at that in the March first, seventy-seven students, that exceeds other years when it was the entire school year. So we are anticipating that to it to continue to increase. Another notable thing about our C P S E services is just like in our school systems um with uh difficulty in finding staffing, we are also seeing that implication at C P S E. Of those uh seventy-seven students, sixty-four of them currently have um services that are being provided. Which means that we have thirteen students that are waiting for uh an available program or provider um due to the lack of of those services. So we are also thinking of that as those students will be entering kindergarten in the coming years. The implications of the delay of those services.
Melissa, just to be clear though, those services until they become school age are county driven, so the county has to provide those services and work with us, so it's not something we could hire for.
Absolutely.
This, this number here, total enrollment, that's in the district.
Correct.
What are these, what are these two guys here? They're so much bigger than.
The number there uh included both the uh public and non-public in those, those two years, so
Those two years.
All the kids that are out in private school, private school placements. Uh so transportation-only students that may be going to uh another uh district, um that's, that's why those numbers are are larger than we saw our.
Actual population is around twenty-seven.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Kim, if you go back into that time frame, I'd be guessing there's probably be about fifty-one hundred.
Yeah, we, we tend to have uh six to seven hundred students that are transportation-only, so they're in private schools from our, you know, K through twelve, continue.
This next slide um really just kind of shows the uh number of C P S E or C S E meetings that happened um throughout the year. Um in C P S E and C S E services, there are many different types of meetings, but this just kind of captures um you know, uh about the number of meetings that were um facilitated. We don't have on here the most current year, like the up-to-date, but what I can tell you is that we are seeing a great trend in the referrals to special education this year. To kind of quantify that for you, I can talk about the referrals to C P S E. So last year, um and again, that's age three all the way until they enter kindergarten, we had fifty-three referrals. This year, from June first until today, we've already had fifty-four referrals. So that means that we have until now, until the end of August, to continue um with additional um referrals. So we are anticipating that there are, that there will be a significant increase in referrals um to both.
And that will affect our incoming kindergarteners.
Absolutely. This slide, I'm not gonna talk too much about it, but um just so everybody is aware, so students, this represents the classifications um that students have for our students that are in school. New York State requires that for students with disabilities, that we have to select a disability classification that um would um be most appropriate out of the thirteen designations for that individual child. When we look at this data, it's pretty consistent, um you know, that so over the years.
Can I ask you a question there? Do we have any information overall on like percentages, uh uh our numbers versus other surrounding districts, do we, do we have more of a, of a percentage of?
The classification rate, Mr. Ryan, is really where you can start to compare classification from one district to the next. We were at fifteen point six percent, uh you know, state average, I think Tim is around fourteen, fifteen?
Yeah, thirteen to fifteen percent is the typical day that puts average.
Oh, okay, yeah, there's, I see it, okay.
So again, our percentages are pretty much in line, in some years you have a little bit more, as Melissa mentioned. We have forty-four new entrants this year who came to South County with an I E P. So they weren't classified by our staff, but they came with an I E P that certainly can increase your overall numbers, that's why you see fluctuation.
Thank you.
So these next couple of us lines are gonna look pretty familiar because these were part of our presentation when we met with you um in the fall. But what we have added is as we've been looking at our projections and in uh and anticipated needs for next year, we have added on here what we would recommend based on, on our projection. So our first two um are our uh two of our elementary schools, Forest Park and Saddlewood. At Forest Park, we have um six different uh life skills classrooms. We are recommending um that, that all of the teaching staff there would remain the same. But with our priority, our district's priority of um social emotional learning and um district-wide and for each of our buildings, we are asking for an increase of a point five social worker, which would give us a full-time social worker at our Forest Park Elementary School. That support would be for our special education students and our general education students. Um at our Saddlewood Elementary School, I know I had talked with you about that increased number of students on at our C P S E level. We are really seeing that in our special classes. Right now, we are projecting about forty-five students to be entering kindergarten in the fall who already have special um special education services. And about half of those students, where we are projecting for special classes. Which is a really significant number, generally you see more students that need less support. Um but that would be um aligned with why we are asking for an additional social emotional classroom because we are already at capacity. With that, um we'd be a special education teacher and a teaching assistant to support that classroom. And then our three other elementary schools, these are where our integrated co-teaching support um will be um provided. We are not asking for any additional support um for our teaching capacity. At Shaker Road, similar to Forest Park, we also have a, a part-time social worker and to round that out again with that goal for the social emotional learning. Um we'd like to make that social worker a full-time um position. And also, we're asking for an additional teaching assistant, um i- in our co-teach um buildings, you'll notice that we have um there will be five grade levels with five teachers. At Shaker Road, we unfortunately um have one um, we are one less uh special education teacher. So that means that they need to be split across sections or grade levels. So that teaching assistant would be able to support when that special education teacher was not in the room.
Things to note there, just to keep in mind, uh Shaker Road, we have uh transitioned uh co-teachers to that building. So that's where that, that slide that is.
Are we short, short staff at Viter? I mean, I see fifty-two students there with five teachers as uh and it says five, oh, two TAs and five monitors, okay. So we, are we, are, we're, we're sufficiently staffed at Viter?
Yes, 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 we're sufficiently staffed at uh Viter. Viter is our west end co-teach option. And so what we do over in the Viter side, they have uh, as you can see, a little bit more care or support, TVs and monitors. They assist with that, and then in our sections where there might be a larger cohort, sometimes a uh a teacher might uh be embedded within a grade level, but the class is in two different homerooms and we support that way, so we've been able to make it work.
Very good, thank you.
Our emphasis at the elementary level K four was really on that new program, as they mentioned, at Saddlewood, as well as increasing the capacity for our social workers to be uh full-time embedded in the building. Right now, the ones that are part-time, split between two buildings, and as you know, uh they could be over at another building when a student's having a hard time. So we're trying to raise that capacity trail.
Meet Southern at Viter, is there any plan to?
So that's a little bit by design, that individual right now uh is doing exceptional work. Uh but they have some uh needs to, to be part-time, so we feel that we can do that by having a full-time school psychologist there and still support the students that are in the program here, but uh we'd like to consider that in the future, right now, I think the staff members working out very well, so we'd like to continue that.
At the middle level, uh again, I also already talked about the uh significant number of students that's in.